Mayor Quinn.
Here.
Mayor Moore.
Here.
If we could please all rise for a silent prayer. Remember, we will refresh it, please. I salute the flag of the United States of America. I think we will have the full acceptance, one nation, under God, individual, liberty, and justice for all. In compliance with the open public meetings of Chapter 231, Public Call 1975, out of court notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, the Coast to the Star Ledger on January 2, 2015, and posted on the bulletin board the same date. All notices are on file with the city clerk. At this time, we're going to open up the meeting to public participation. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
On favor?
Aye.
The public is expected to conduct themselves in a proper manner. Any derogatory abuse or threatening statements will not be permitted. The chair will immediately rule such conduct out of order, and after appropriate warning may terminate any further comments from the speaker. As I have you guys now, three minutes you have to speak, and when you call up to the mic, please state your name and address for the record.
Robert Weiner, 601 Madison. Just a quick question, or maybe everybody knows, and I -- the Bangs Avenue Garage, is everybody aware that it's open and accessible to anybody from 7:00 at night till 7:00 in the morning? And it's been that way for at least seven to 10 days because the center metal gate is broken. So I don't know if anybody's following up on it, but it's been seven to 10 days all through the weekend, this morning, last night, over the weekend, so is everybody aware of that, or nobody's aware of that?
I'm not aware of that.
I wasn't.
No.
Okay.
We have a presence there on weekends, and during the week, the state runs it. So we'll be in touch with the state tomorrow to tell them the gate's broken.
It is. They told me they're waiting for a port, but it's been at least seven to 10 days, right?
It's being run by the state during the weekend.
Okay.
The presence we have there is by, you know, on weekends, we man it with a staff, and we charge for parking.
Okay.
Now, we didn't know about it, but you're saying they know about it. So we'll give them a heads up also.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yesterday, when we discussed the master plan, I decided to look it up. It's 210 pages, but in it, it's from 2006. And when the planner was here, she said that it said in the master plan that we don't have enough recreation. I think that should be looked into again because the water park's not in there, for one thing. There's a, I think Kennedy Park is not in there neither. So I think it should be looked at again. It's from 2006. Higher and Goole did the master plan. Does anybody know anything about it?
We, there's, no, are you, sorry.
Finish all your questions, Rita.
What?
Finish all your questions.
Oh, okay. Well, that was the main one, and Louise just told me about the waterfront, so I'm not going to discuss that, the Bradley Cove. I know about that now. So they have clear title to the land, is that it?
I'll take the, I'll take the master plan.
I just want to know, do they have clear title? That's my other question.
Are they your only two questions?
That's it.
Okay.
I want to know about the master plan.
Your time's up, okay.
So, and Michelle hopefully can correct anything that I say that is incorrect, but we have another master plan due for 2016, which we are currently prepping. So everything in the previous master plan will be looked at, including the parks that you're saying that are not in the 2006 one, and they will all be updated. But it's not due till 2016.
The master plan has --
You have to do them, oh, go ahead.
Every 10 years.
Every 10 years.
The master plan has to be reexamined.
But you don't have to go by the master plan, do you? Is that like the law?
Well, it's a, it's a guide, and the ordinances and redevelopment plans are supposed to be in accordance with the vision set by the master plan, but ultimately, the council has the final say and can deviate from the master plan as council sees fit, so long as it indicates the reasons on the record for doing so.
Okay, I think you should look at it again. We got another year to go.
Well, the planning board is going to reevaluate.
Huh?
In 2016, the planning board is going to reexamine and reevaluate the master plans.
It will be updated next year.
Okay. And what about the clear title for Bradley Cove?
Yeah, so I called Mr. Smith in Freehold, and we spoke, and he sent a few documents, which I forwarded on to our redevelopment attorney, to Fred. And yeah, it looks like the, if they were to do the things to get out of the Highlands claim, which is move a little bit this way, move out of the Green Acres Zone, move a little bit this way, that they would, that they would be able to get title to a smaller piece of developmental land. So, and that speaks to the appraisal. The appraisal is not looking at the value of the townhomes of Bradley Cove as they were proposed in 2007, because everybody knows that that's like, wait, wait, we're not anywhere near there. And they can't build them, build them as proposed. So it's simply looking at the highest and best use of what they could clear title to, which is a portion of that, that tracks.
Okay. Keep going.
I see Fred's here tonight.
Hi, Warner Baumgartner, 5th Avenue.
Can you hold up one second?
Oh, okay.
Just because, I don't know why I didn't see Warner. Warner was a big, big help with the Historical Society getting the Crane House.
Thank you.
I just wanted, you were here, I wanted to thank you also.
Why, thank you, thank you very much. Yeah, I've been involved with the Crane House for over a decade, and it's quite a good bit of news that I got from Bob Craig at the state. Sorry, I missed yesterday, but I downloaded some documents off the Internet, and I looked at this application for a grant to acquire a partial roadbed for the park they are considering at Bradley Cove. And I see there's a really tight deadline on this, but I did notice a couple of things that probably should be fixed, and I'd like to call them to your attention and to Michelle's attention also, since I just got this today. On one of the pages, it refers to Summerwood Park, proposed Summerwood Park. We don't have a Summerwood Park.
That's where I worked, Summerwood.
What's that?
That's where I worked.
Uh-huh, okay. I think that's supposed to say Springwood, not Summerwood. So there's a couple of typos in here. Somebody should really read through this and find the typos and fix them before it's submitted. Other thing that I was really concerned about was there's a copy of an open space map from our city master plan, which has been incorrect or misleading at best since that map was created. It shows actual buildings, pavilions outlined in green as if they are open public space, which they are not. So I'm wondering, is it advisable to submit the official map, which has been adopted, which is wrong, or to correct the map and submit a correct map for this application? That's going to have to be a judgment call. And I think this is great news, that this park is going to move forward. I must make note of a bit of irony, though, and that is that all of this property was, at one time, public property. It was a public street, it was public land on the oceanfront, and a prior administration had the ill-conceived notion to sell it for development rights. And I think it's really ironic now that you're looking for public money to buy back what was at one time public property, but I do hope it works. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Warner. We do have another week to tighten things up, so we're going to look at the application again, and we'll take note of those things.
It goes through with them.
Yeah, absolutely.
And I'm more than happy to add some input.
Thanks.
Motion to close.
Do you have another?
I'm sorry.
I'll be fast. Hi, Ketsie of Auburn, 304 Langford. Two things. One, I really wanted to thank you guys, especially Mr. Ricky Garts. I don't know if he's here. Hey there. A while ago, back in May, I graduated from Rutgers-Newark, and you all and him really helped me with my capstone, with my budgets that I'd asked for and everything like that. And so graduated, did really well, so thanks for that. And later on in the agenda, you guys are going to be authorizing my appointment to the zoning board, so I'm really excited, glad to be a part. Wanted to put a face to the name before you authorize it, but I hope I get it, and I've lived here all my life, I'm really committed to the city, and I'm really excited to be a part.
Well, thank you for applying.
Thank you.
Motion, oh, Jerry.
Hello, mayor and council. I was wondering, on 2015-324, you going to endorse the plan that the state wants, or we just going to discuss it and then get the opinion of the store owner than other people? I see that's up for the vote. No, that's it, that's the only question.
We're adopting a resolution endorsing part of the plan and saying what we think is wrong with the other parts of the plan, where we're against going from four lanes to two lanes, or two lanes to one lane both ways. So the resolution is in response, they said adopt a resolution. For, against, so some of it's work. We would love to see Main Street repaved. We would like to see the curbs and the entire sidewalk redone. We would like to see the
Bike lanes.
Bike lanes. We would like to see the safety traffic devices, the new traffic lights, but we're against the decrease in the lanes from four to two.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to close.
Move it.
The next question is proclamation recognizing Dr. Thomas Daniels.
Do you have any representatives from the family there? Okay, I'm going to, on behalf of the council, I'm going to read the proclamation. All right, as you know, Dr. Thomas Daniels passed away, all right, two weeks ago, and the city would like just to, all right, recognize him through this proclamation. All right, and it reads, whereas Dr. Thomas E. Daniels, Jr., was born and raised in Kentucky, and whereas, upon graduation from high school, he decided to serve our country by enlisting in the Army's specialized training program, and was trained in engineering, all right, at Prairie View A&amp;M by college, and went on to pursue and attain a degree in engineering in 1948 when he left the service. And whereas, after graduation, he married Maxine Harris and became an engineering instructor, all right, at Prairie View A&amp;M, then moved on to pursue a career in engineering at Fort Monmouth in the specification and drafting branch at Camp Evans. And whereas, Dr. Daniels pursued an advanced degree as he progressed, all right, through the ranks over the next 35 years, from a bench engineer to director of a major research and development laboratory, deputy director, and later director of the Combat Surveillance and Target Acquisition Laboratory. And whereas, he was the second African-American director of a major Army Research Development Laboratory, and received many citations and awards, was inducted into the University of Iowa's College of Engineering, all right, Distinguished Engineering Alumni Academy, and he earned an MBA, all right, was granted an honorary doctorate degree from Monmouth University in 2001. And whereas, after 38 years of exceptional and meritorious service, Dr. Thomas E. Daniels retired from the military, but continued his service to the community by serving as chairman of the Labor, all right, and Industry Committee of the Asbury Park and Neptune NAACP, founded the program for accelerated, or for acceleration, all right, for computer science careers at Monmouth University, and became a mentor and role model, all right, to many in the community. Now therefore, be it resolved, that the mayor and council, all right, of the city of Asbury Park do hereby acknowledge, all right, Dr. Thomas E. Daniels, Jr., for his many accomplishments and contributions to our country and to the residents of Asbury Park.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, I would like to read a statement regarding initiative petitions. On August 14, 2015, I received initiative petitions to be placed for four questions on the general municipal election ballot on November 3, 2015 pursuant to the initiative and referendum provision of the Faulkner Act and JSA 40, colon, 69A, dash, 184 through 196. Thereafter, I undertook due diligence to review the petitions to determine whether they were prepared and submitted in accordance with all relevant statutory requirements. Following my review, I have determined that all four petitions must be rejected at this time due to the fact that they were not submitted in a timely manner in order for the proposed questions to be placed on the November 3, 2015 general or municipal election ballot. Additionally, the petitions were rejected at this time due to the fact that they were insufficient number of ballot signatures identified for each of the proposed questions, therefore rendering them to be disqualified. With insufficient signatures, the petitions were not qualified to be on a ballot for November 3, 2015 election, or any election thereafter if necessary. The petitioners were provided with a copy of my written decision concerning this matter on September 4, 2015. At this time, we're going to move to the adoption of the 2015 municipal budget. Right, at this time, we're going to open the public hearing. Can I have a motion to open the public meeting for the municipal budget amendment?
Move it.
Would anybody like to, from the public, like to comment regarding the amendment proposed, which is 2015-313, that was introduced at the last meeting? Hi, well, how much is it? There's no amount here, Ricky.
Rita, do me a favor, just stand up and talk into the microphone.
Okay. Their amendment?
Yes, this is the amendment to the budget.
Okay. How much is it?
Can you be more, how much is our city budget, or how much is the place?
Yeah, well, what is the city budget, and what's the amendment? How much is that? I'm sure it's going to be more money, right? The amendment?
The net amount of the amendment is $920,851.75 for the current fund. It's an increase from the beginning to the end due to various items throughout the amendment that was provided and advertised accordingly. There are numerous items that you can read through to see which ones went up and which ones went down.
Okay, so what's the total budget?
Total budget will be $42,711,833.33 for your current operating budget. Your sewer utility operating budget will be $5,282,726.66. Your parking utility budget will be $2,187,040. And your beach utility budget will be $1,276,000.
Did you say the parking one is going to be $2 million to operate it?
The budget will be $2,187,040, that's correct.
To operate it?
That is their budget.
Oh my God, that's a, what is it up, a million dollars now, the budget? Wasn't, wasn't it 41 last year? 41 million?
Roughly, yes.
So now it's 42, almost 43, right?
The operating budget's up $1.2 million, that's correct.
At 1.2. That's a lot of money, considering we're making so much money. No, no answers? Why is it up? If we're making so much money, we have so many ratables, and we have a beachfront now. What's going on?
Most of the increases have to do with increased appropriations for our insurance. Insurance has gone up $759,000 primarily because of group health costs of a half a million dollars. Police salaries and wages have gone up $262,000. Fire salaries and wages have gone up $125,000. Streets and roads have gone up $155,000. We've offset that partly with a debt service decrease of $171,000.
We also had a decrease of transitional aid in the amount of $800,000.
That is correct.
It's a little bit of a moving target, right? As we get, as we get closer to where we need to be to stabilize the taxes, the state automatically takes away, which the mayor said from the beginning, we're never going to be able to decrease because any time we get our increased revenue up, they take it away. So until we can get all the way back, we're going to be in this, and everybody's disappointed, we're going to continue to work at it, but we're going to be in this cycle of a moving target. They're always going to move the target on us until we're on transitional aid.
Your tax increase right now is 1.7 cents. $800,000 in decreased revenue from the state equates to almost 7 cents. So you've offset that 7-cent loss with 5.3 cents of your own to balance this instead of passing it on to the taxpayer. So we've covered that.
A chunk.
Yes.
Well, one thing you really should look at is the insurance. That went up $790,000?
Yes.
Well, that, that should be looked at.
We look at it every day.
It doesn't matter if you look at it, you don't live here.
We review all the line items, Rita, and Ricky and I talked
He's being nasty too.
Who said what? I didn't, I didn't hear anybody say it. I thought he was being nasty.
Anyway, he should turn around and look at us when he's giving us those numbers.
Well, he's reading, well, we'll get a better seat, seating plan in the future. Excuse me. Nope, nobody's happy with the tax increase, but again, it's factual. The state gave us $1.5 million. They told us that we're going to give us 1.950. We had to reduce it to 1.5. The 1950 was a 15% reduction from last year, so we lost $800,000 in state aid. As Ricky said, the $800,000 would have been a 7-cent increase. We're looking at a 1.7 cent increase, so we nibbled away at that 7 cents by reducing it 5.3 cents. Insurance is high. We're in the state health benefits plan. It's not a Cadillac plan, it's not a platinum plan. It's, it's a state health benefits plan. It's what the state is suggesting we stay in. We're also looking at other plans, but if you get out of the state health benefits plans and you have one or two tragic incidences where somebody needs major open-heart surgery, which is worth millions of dollars, your rate goes through the sky, where the state health benefits plan does it because it's spread out over so many municipalities, Board of Educations, et cetera. Even with that, they go up 7% every year. I mean, health benefits across America are out of control, and it's nothing like we as a city can do except look at it every year, see if it's worth switching out of, and right now it's not worth switching out with the unknown, but we do look at it, and we look at it for the sake of the citizens. I would say this, again, nobody's happy with the tax increase. I believe this tax increase, and Ricky, Mr. Garts, you can correct me, is about a $200 a year increase to the average homeowner.
That's correct.
So that isn't good, it could be a lot worse if we didn't have a good surplus. I think we put $2.1 million in surplus
That's correct.
Towards reducing the taxes this year. Last year was $500,000.
Yes.
We were able to put another $1.6 million of surplus towards taxpayers and reducing taxes by some good fiscal policies throughout the year. And again, nobody's happy with this increase, but Mr. doom and gloom, I'm Mr. doom and gloom. I see the light at the end of the tunnel. For two years, we're going to be at a, off state aid, and we're going to be able to come here and hopefully with some more parking, with some more of this, with some more ratables, and say, guess what? It's either going to be a zero-flack budget or a tax decrease. But as long as we're accepting that state aid, the state says, the state's not dumb. They act it sometimes, but they're not dumb. They're not going to say, here's a million and a half, go reduce your taxes, when other towns are saying, well, if you give us money, we'll reduce our taxes also. We cannot use that money to reduce taxes, and that's a matter of life, the matter of fact. We, at one point, we were getting $13 million in state aid, transitional aid. We're down to a million and a half, next year will be less than a million. We are making very good progress to get our financial ship in order.
Well, I got a suggestion.
Okay.
From now on, when you hire people, hire them as contractors, and then you don't have to give them any benefits. How about that one?
We'll look into it.
Huh?
We'll look into it.
Yeah, that just happened to my son-in-law, who worked for Chase Bank for 18 years. Now they hire him back as a contractor, no benefits.
It's a lot different than the private and the public.
Well, you could do it.
So, we have contracts, we just can't rip up and throw away, we have to negotiate in good faith, there are bargaining units. We're a town with civil service. We do have a couple of handicaps out there, but again, for Mr., again, Mr., like, I think it doesn't look that rosy, I do see a light at the end of the tunnel, and I have to tell you the truth. I remember two years ago, one of my first meetings with Mr. Garts, I think Amy was there, it was in probably August of 2013, and he said, give me a year, give me two years, and you'll be in much better financial shape. We are in much better financial shape. To be able to put $2.1 million of surplus to offset a tax increase when last year was only $500,000, that's a million six in surplus, where we cut money here, we cut money there, and generated a surplus, but like other towns do, to reduce the taxes, or reduce, in this case, the tax increase. Are any other questions?
Can't keep doing it.
Nobody likes doing it, Rita.
I know what they like.
Everybody up here is a homeowner and pays taxes just like you. So I mean, it's not like we're doing it just to be spiteful, I mean, my wife and my dog aren't happy. I can't, I can't raise my dogs' rent.
Oh, okay. But I, we've got to find a way. Motion to close the public hearing? Move it. I didn't need to cut you off. Resolution 2015-315, adoption of the 2015 municipal budget. Have a motion to approve it?
Move it. Second.
Any comments or questions? Next. We'll call Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're now on to the consent agenda. All matters listed on consent agenda are presented collectively to the city council and will be considered for approval with one vote. These matters are considered to be routine in nature, and there will be no individual discussion on these items. If discussion is desired by one or more council members, as certain particular items then said items will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. We only have two items this evening, is Resolution 2015-316, approving special events wedding applications as presented September 8, 2015, and Resolution 2015-317, resolution authorizing payment of payroll in the amount of $1,947,269.97. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second. Any comments or questions? Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to individual resolutions. Resolutions 2015-311, authorizing the appointment of zoning board of adjustment. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Any comments or questions?
What's the name?
Ketsie.
I'm not even kidding. Well, I just want to make sure everybody knows what we're referring to.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes, and thank you.
Resolution 2015-318, resolution authorizing payment of bills in the amount of $1,468,992.37. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second. Comments or questions? Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2015-319, resolution approving liquor licenses for the 2015-2016 licensing year. May I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2015-320, resolution awarding bid for supplying liquid sodium hydrochloride to the waste water treatment plant. Can I have a motion, please?
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2015-321, authorizing the execution of the commodity resale agreement with the county of Monmouth. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it. Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2015-322, resolution authorizing the purchase of two 2016 Ford Transit 150 low roof cargo vans with options for the Department of Public Works. May I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second. Comments or questions? Comments or questions? Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2015-323, approval of the Bradley Cove Open Space Project, authorization of the Asbury Park's financial participation in the project, authorizing of the signing and execution of all requirement documents, and indicates its readiness to proceed with the project in terms of matching funds for application to the Monmouth County Municipal Open Space Grant Program for acquisition of funds. Have a motion?
Move it.
Second. Comments or questions? Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2015-324, resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Asbury Park endorsing partial concept development of the New Jersey Route 71 payment rehabilitation project in the city of Asbury Park. Have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second. Comments or questions? Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2015-325, resolution authorizing approval to submit a grant application and execute a grant agreement with the New Jersey Department Transportation for the Fourth Avenue Improvement Project. Have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Go ahead.
It's not really a question, but it's going to be rhetorical, and I apologize, but it goes back to the budget a little bit. This city has not paved the street in four years, which is obnoxious in itself. This is a grant to pave Fourth Avenue next year. At the next council meeting, we should be announcing a plan for 2015, 2016 with a $3 million plan to start paving some streets in Asbury Park, which is a start, at no increase to the tax dollars. And after that, we're looking to do a three to five-year plan where we'll be grading our streets from one to five, then laying out what street's going to be paved the following year, following year, following year, and budgeting money, again, looking not to burden the taxpayers with a large increase, but everybody in this room agrees the streets are in terrible shape and need to be paved. So it is a cost coming down the road, but this plan will be introduced at the next meeting, is a $3 million plan, which will have no effect on this budget whatsoever, the money's already budgeted. Thank you.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2015-326, a resolution authorizing a memorandum of understanding between the Monmouth County and the city of Asbury Park. Have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Move it.
Second. Call favor?
Hi. Hi.